One of the three major provisions is unintelligible. In Spanish, it says, "Estos cambios son esperables y similares para ciudades de nuestro tamaño." In English, it says, "These changes are expected and similar to cities of our size." These changes are expected and similar to cities of our size. That's one of three bullet points where the citizens of this city are supposed to be able to understand what this meeting is about. Third point, for Spanish language citizens. You've got futuro servicio de aguas poluviales. That's a service. Anybody in Spanish who's reading that is something that they receive, a service that they get. What you're talking about here is an empresa de servicios públicos. And it needs to say that so that our Latino members of the community know what this meeting is about. And finally, there's not a single mention in this notice about what this is going to cost. If you want people to come and talk to you and have a meeting and get information out, you need to put forward a little bit about what it's going to cost. And with those four defects, I request that we cancel the meeting, that you redo the notice, and we start over.
Yeah. When you've got these bullet points sitting back there, not a word. Not a word here.
Okay, well.
Yeah, that's mercury, and this is the focus of this plan that has already been approved by DEQ November of 2022. The focus of this plan will be to reduce soil erosion and stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff is the only thing that's mentioned on here. There's going to be a new utility, stormwater runoff?
All right, well, I appreciate the early feedback.
It's not feedback, it's an objection.
Okay. Well, we're going to go ahead and move forward with the community meeting as is. This isn't going to be the only committee meeting for this utility.
We've promised to make the necessary changes in future notices.
Absolutely. Okay, I got a lot of questions going on here, and I appreciate the feedback and I appreciate the passion and people coming out here today to talk with us about it. This is a project we've been working on for quite a while now. And we're here for community feedback as much as community information. And so we're going to want to hear where we're hitting the mark and we're missing the mark just as much.
Where you're missing the mark.
You're missing the mark.
Missing the mark, notice so people can come and tell you elsewhere.
Okay. I appreciate the feedback, sir. And we're going to have that fixed in the next one, and we're going to have another meeting as well moving forward.
Fix it in Spanish language so it's not some stupid Google translation. People that are from a lot just understand what they're into.
Absolutely.
And where you put the cost?
Well, we're going to be sharing costs this evening.
Why don't you share some of it in the next notice?
The cost is a recommendation at this point, it's not set in stone. Okay. Well, I'd like to go ahead and get started with the meeting. I think there's a lot of information we want to share, and we're going to be timed for feedback at the end of this. We have time set aside for a couple hours this evening. Our presentation's about 45 minutes, so the time after that, that leaves an hour and 15 minutes for questions and comments. We're going to be recording what all those comments are. We're recording this evening, we're going to be taking that information. What we're trying to do is develop a stormwater utility for the city, and it's ultimately a policy decision for the city council. And while we develop it, there's staff recommendations, but we also want to hear back from the community as well and see if that is going to be something that the council needs to take into account when they're adopting a policy or not adopting a policy. Sorry.
If we're getting trouble in the central.
Okay, my apologies. All right. I'm going to talk a little bit louder, going to try to get through this this evening. I understand this is something that's already causing a lot of frustration with people, so... Okay, I would appreciate, while my team up here is speaking this evening, if you could all refrain from interrupting, it is going to make it harder to get through all this. I'm fine with you all interrupting me, and we can talk later at this point, but we would like to get through the presentation without interruptions. If you could save your questions for the end, I would appreciate that, thank you. All right, can we go ahead and go to the first slide? All right, so I am going to introduce the team here this evening. Like I said, my name is Jeff Hunsaker.
Is there a way to close that shade up there so we can have to see the entire slide?
Also on the right.
Okay. Yeah, it's over there as well. Sorry, we cannot close the shade more than it is closed. All right. Like I said, my name is Jeff Hunsaker, I'm the Public Works Director here at the city. Joining me today, we also have James Lofton, our city engineer, Leland Coaster, our Wastewater Services Manager. We have our staff project team here today. We have Andrew Castro, who's our GIS specialist, Logan Adams, who's one of our engineering technicians, Chip Olstad, who's our project manager for this project, and we also have one of our consultant team here this evening, Deb Galardi from Galardi-Rossstein Group. All right. I'm going to pass the mic off to Chip now, so he can start explaining the process that we've gone through.
Thanks, Jeff. Well, as Jeff mentioned, I'm Chip Olstad, I'm Engineering Project Manager with the city, and I'm helping out on this project as well as the construction project at the wastewater treatment plant. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. No? I'll get louder. This is an informal, we'd like to have this be an informal meeting and an opportunity to exchange ideas. I'm looking at my notes because I can't read real well up there, and I have a cheat sheet for what I'm talking about. So the stormwater utility, the concept is not a new one. It's one that's been around for almost 50 years within Oregon, and it's one that most Oregon cities greater than 20,000 population have adopted. So we started work on this about the first part of 2023, worked with our consultant team to do some of the technical work that we do too from a GIS perspective and from a financial perspective and looking at what do we take to set up utility and forecasting costs. Our agenda for today is to discuss community values and mission, McMinnville stormwater infrastructure, regulatory requirements, why a stormwater utility, what's the driver for that? We have a project advisory committee team that we developed last year, I think it was in September was our first getting together as a group. And that team is made up of customers from residential customers, commercial, industrial, and institutional customers. We wanted to get as a broad spectrum of users as we could, and we really appreciate the time that that committee took. They have some pretty dry reports that they took the time to go through, check our data, and help us with some glitches that we have there. So I just would like to take a moment and just acknowledge them for their work and the time that they've dedicated to this. I'd like the meeting to be interactive, and we'll be pausing for questions, and we'll have time at the end of the presentation for this discussion and more questions. Next slide. So what we wanted to talk about is a starting point, what the community mission values and goals are. And the city's mission is to deliver high-quality services in a collaborative way with our partners for a prosperous, safe, and livable community. Our values, our stewardship, responsible for our shared public assets and resources. I think there's two folds, there are two ways to look at that. One is looking back at those that have built the improvements that we're using today, and I think probably we're hoping that we would do a good job in managing that and protecting those improvements. And then looking ahead at providing resources to maintain and operate the stormwater system, to plan for replacement of failed facilities that have exhausted their service life, and to provide facilities that would accommodate growth and development within the city. Next slide. In terms of resource limitations, we've got two bullets listed there. One is for a lack of sufficient and sustainable funding to meet operations and maintenance of the stormwater system, rehabilitation and replacement of stormwater facilities, and compliance with expanding regulatory requirements that the city has to meet. And the second is that the nominal funding that we have right now is not being equitably charged, so it's not fair. I think the approach that we're recommending is consistent with what other Oregon and communities and nationwide have done, to come up with a system that is more equitable than what we're currently doing. Next slide. We wanted to briefly read what is in stormwater and what causes the runoff. As the city grows, development increases in previous areas such as rooftops, parking lots, driveways, and streets. And the runoff from the new surfaces flows faster and in greater amounts than before development. An unmanaged increase in flows can result in localized flooding or a significant risk of area-wide flooding and property damage. Flows over in previous areas accumulate pollutants that are transported to the stormwater system and that eventually end up in our drainageways, our creeks, and rivers. Next slide. Oh, you got it, got it. Good job, Andrew. So in terms of impervious area, we just thought we would show you a couple aerial photographs of areas that we're showing, the parcels, and then the areas that are highlighted in yellow are what are impervious areas for those parcels. So you can see they include rooftops, driveways, patios, private sidewalks, and compacted gravel. Before I move on, are there any questions that you have? So driveways and walkways are impervious areas, so when stormwater hits those surfaces, it runs off rapidly into the storm drain system compared to where it was released undeveloped, it would infiltrate into the soil and would run off more slowly. Yes?
Is this a mandated by the state and federal to do this, or this is something that's...
So funding for the stormwater utility is not a regulatory requirement.
What did you just say?
Sorry. The federal government doesn't require that we fund this with a stormwater utility. The federal government and the state government do require that we make some improvements and some action plans in how we manage our stormwater system. So what we're proclaiming tonight is one way of needing that funding need.
So you don't have to implement that if you didn't have some active program?
No, we actually have to have an act program that's audited by the state. Well. There's many elements to this that are fairly onerous for communities to meet. Yeah.
I think we want to, there's a lot more information coming up. Let's get through some of that information, and near the end, we can talk about if we have to or not. There's a lot more to present.
Well, these guys work.
We can use those one up there, let me bring your chair, Chip.
So the mic's on here, turn that one off.
Okay.
Right up next to that.
Okay. That's what I can say. Is this better? It is, okay, all right. Apologize for that.
Teach.
Well, I apologize for the microphone.
Not your problem, that's the state matter.
If there are more questions on this part of the presentation, we'd like to move to the McMinnville stormwater structure, and Leland Coaster with our Public Works Department will present that part.
All right, I'll use this one, and if you all have questions, I'll probably let you speak into this so we get it into the recording system. So to start with our system, so as mentioned earlier, I'm the Wastewater Services Manager. I oversee the wastewater treatment facility and all the conveyance pipes for the wastewater system. For our stormwater system, we have approximately 145 miles of stormwater pipelines, 45 miles of open channels which are ditches, 3,665 catch basins, 17 public and private detention basins, and of that, our only maintenance is mainly very minimal to nonexistent. There is no funding to take care of that, so what we do is we do emergency response. If something backs up, we respond and try and get it cleared. A typical stormwater program has a preventative maintenance program, which is cleaning the lines, TV inspecting the lines, making sure they're clear and performing properly, and to perform emergency repairs. There's capital projects that have to be developed to replace lines that are going bad or to expand systems to be able to handle additional flows. And there's the regulatory compliance, excuse me, regulatory compliance side as well as development review so we can make sure that when developments come in, that they meet the current state standards and our standards for stormwater systems. Next slide. Which I think is the video system. So basically what we're going to do right now is kind of show you why we want to get a stormwater utility started and what the needs are. So to start with, this is some of the failures that are out there presently in our system. We have a 48-inch storm main that basically runs from Lafayette Avenue over to the Yam Hill River, and as you can see right now, that is a four-foot wide pipe, and those are holes in the bottom of it. If you could pause that for a second, Andrew? So as you can see right there, the bottom of the line is gone, so what happens is, as water starts going through there and rushing through there during storms, it causes the dirt and sediment that's in the ground right there to get stirred up and start pulling through the system, and eventually there's going to be a big sinkhole over that line. Okay, go ahead, Andrew. And this is a 100-year-old pipe. As you can see, it's a brick-lined system, the bricks have failed or the coating around them has failed to the point where the bricks are falling out, and now it's just an open hole in the bottom of the line. So right here, this is actually just to the north of Joe Dancer Park in the field, and this is a sinkhole over that same 48-inch line. Presently, this was filmed, I want to say, a year ago or so, but since that time, you can actually just about fit a dump truck into this line right now. And then there's a little better view, you can see the water where the pipe should be. And this is one of our biggest costs that's going to be in the system. Now, in our downtown area, we have many failures, and what I mean by failures or issues is you have misalignment in joints, you have a broken chunk out of the line up there, or you can see a piece missing. This is old clay pipe that is approximately 100 years old, that has failed or has bellies in the line where water sets.
Why don't you explain to them, or probably a third if your water comes during a wet season, older sanitary sewer also has a storm system because the joints aren't cut?
Yes, that is true. So as we just had this last weekend, a pretty good rainstorm, our flows were roughly around 6 million to the treatment facility, we jumped up to 12 million. So these are issues. Now, in our sanitary system, we've actually made some huge improvements, but I'm getting sidetracked here, so let's stick on topic for the moment. So again, these are some of the smaller lines, 8, 10, 12, 16-inch, but as you can see, the bottoms are gone, they're nonexistent. Our conveyance guys have been pulled downtown many a time on backups, and basically, they're just pushing through pipe the best they can and pulling back mud because the bottom of the lines were just gone. And this is the biggest driving factor, there's an entire section around that line's gone, so eventually there's going to be a sinkhole right there. And there's where someone's pushed a line into this one, and the pipe all around it has busted up and is no longer sound.
How long have you been doing, I have a question, is that the date that this video was done was 2014?
That is correct.
Why hasn't something been done for...
There is no fund. I have no... That's what we're trying to do here.
Well, it's a bit rain, don't you think?
How many years has that been stepping in?
That...
2014?
Mm-hmm. As I stated, we have no funding to manage this system, there's been no funding to take care of this system. We are presently trying to get it established to start taking care of the system. And again, here's, of course, root intrusion issues that caused the backups.
It should be noted, folks, that we're not the first ones to bring this information forward. Some of these issues have been known about for a long time, some of them haven't. A lot of it maybe hasn't been front and center because we don't have an established stormwater program that goes out and surveys these lines without funding to have a program that goes in TVs. Some of this TV information only happens in emergency, where we're like, what is causing the backup? And so our sanitary crew will go out and try to fix the situation, but we're missing a lot of data all over town. We don't truly know how bad it is everywhere because we don't have an established program. So that's... That's why we're here today, is to talk about how we get a program in place.
And we're going to get another bill and get, because of mismanagement from the city, we're going to get, now we're going to get a stormwater utility for $15 or whatever because of mismanagement, just like we got a $13 sewer charge.
I can't speak to...
For mismanagement of the city, we don't have the money.
I...
2014, that is unconscionable!
I invite you to send that in a letter to your councils and email it to engineering. We're happy to bring that information forward. Let's get through this information and know that we are doing our best to bring this information to the light and make progress.
Thank you. Just move today and start today and get a fix. Yeah, that's fun.
All right, we'll continue on here. So again, as we're showing, the pipes in the system, in our stormwater system, need a lot of maintenance, need a lot of repair. So as you can see, we've had locations up here, I don't know if we want to continue, I think everybody kind of gets the point, there is a lot of problems out there that we've got to fix, and we've got to figure out how to fix them and how to fund them. It is still safe at this point, a lot of these, like the 48-inch line, that actually goes through a lot of areas that aren't heavily traveled, and it's sound at this time, but there are points that our conveyance crew responds to sinkholes a couple of times a year. Well, there's never been anything to manage stormwater. We've never had a requirement to manage stormwater. Correct? Mm-hmm. Well? Yeah. So we'll continue on here with the different videos. Yeah, okay. Yes, I agree. So we can, I think, James, you're up then?
As mentioned before, I'm James Lofton, the city engineer. We wanted to transition into talking about the regulatory component. As folks noticed, we had some flyers out there, we hadn't talked about those yet, and we plan on speaking more about what the TMDL is, but that is our newer regulatory requirement. We received the requirement from DEQ, it was back in '21, to implement a plan. We did so, we came up with a plan that has a five-year implementation. As you can see on the slide, we'll be required to have a full implementation of that plan by '26, so we're in the middle of that now, and we're moving forward with that. The TMDL, it's a total maximum daily load, we're part of the Willamette Valley Basin, the Willamette River Basin, the Yam Hill flows into that, so it's regulated under that regulation. This may be one of the reasons why maybe this wasn't dealt with proactively in the past, there was not formal regulatory requirement forcing the city to do so. We now have that, but that is only a small component of the overall cost of the system. You're looking at a quarter of it is to deal with the regulatory component, and three-quarters of the cost is to deal with the actual infrastructure. How do we fix this? How do we move forward and maintain our system that we have today? What we have to look forward to is, of course, additional regulations. We know that they don't back off on regulation, but they continue to give you more, and we know that in the next two to five years, we're expecting to get a full MS4 permit, which is typical for cities that range from 50 to 100,000 would be a Phase 2 permit, but DEQ has the right and the ability to require that permit on a jurisdiction or a city with even less than 50,000. Our urbanized area, not just the population of McMinnville, but the urbanized area is right around 42 to, 42 to 45,000? 42, okay, so we're not far from 50, and DEQ has given us the heads up. You guys are next. So we expect more regulation in the future. Part of this discussion is making sure we're set up with the ability to respond appropriately to those regulation requirements. And so if we go to the next slide. We'll get into that in a bit. There's quite a few different components to that, the TMDL, but right now, what's driving it for us is we just, the majority, if not all of our system, is going to the Yam Hill River, if not through creeks or drainageways, through our actual pipe to outfall. And so you can see in the Yam Hill River, we're dealing, there's several issues that are driving that and why it's regulated. The temperature fluctuations in there in the summertime, it can get too hot, and that can have difficult requirements on our sanitary plant. E. coli, the heavy metals, the mercury has been identified as one of the metals that's present in the river, nitrogen phosphorus. We're dealing with a lot of regulatory requirements for making sure we don't make those issues any worse with our system. And if you go to the next slide, it has more information on the total maximum daily load. So the mercury total maximum daily load, as I mentioned before, we have five years to implement this plan. DEQ adopted the plan that was, that process was adopted by the city, and then it moved forward and was submitted to DEQ. DEQ approved the five-year implementation plan, and there's a whole bunch of elements here that it includes. Public outreach is one of them, educating folks on how not to pollute our streams essentially. New ordinances specifically related to erosion control, as what was mentioned earlier, making sure that project sites around town aren't letting a lot of sediment wash into the catch basins, which goes downstream. Staff training, we need to train folks within the city on how to manage our system properly. Additional inspections and tracking of outfalls and other elements of our system, and we need to have guidance documents, and eventually, we need to have a full erosion control program that is both adopted through an ordinance and council, but also enacted in our development community where they come in, get erosion control permit before they start their development, and so on and so forth. This is the requirement that's come to us from DEQ that we are required to deal with. This is the requirement that's come to us from DEQ that we are required to deal with. Funding to set up this program has not been sorted yet. So right now, essentially, it's being funded by other departments and other utilities that are trying to essentially act as a stopgap so we don't get into regulatory trouble. Your question may have been more for our NPDES permit for the plant. I'm not sure what it's about. We are not out of compliance with our TMDL right now. With our existing program, because we are implementing our program in the timeline we said we would. I think that's the NPDES permit for the wastewater plant.
If I could, James?
Go ahead.
So the mercury TMDL that has been proposed and approved and adopted by DEQ doesn't have an actual limit. They have instituted best management practices to try and limit it. And that's how they've kept from making a set value? That's exactly it.
Programmatic changes, yeah. The... Yes, yeah. It's about a quarter of the cost of the utility is what we're finding is just being regulatory compliant with the... Bureaucratic is one way to put it, yes. But it's what DEQ requires and we have to be in compliance with it. Right now, other sources are paying for that. And so what that does is it takes away from the level of service we can provide with those other sources. And so, next slide. So to better, to further explain what we see as upcoming regulatory requirements, that MS4 permit, municipal separate stormwater sewer system permit, that's authorized by the Federal Clean Water Act. It is a NPDES permit. That comes down from EPA to DEQ and DEQ is responsible with actually directing cities to get an MS4 permit. Cities, once they're told they have to do that, they have to prepare a plan, just like we did with the TMDL, and say, okay, this is what we propose. They can approve it or they can say, nope, you need to be stricter and you need to do more. What we are expecting is it will be similar to what we've seen other cities have to meet for their Phase II permits. So we already have a good idea of what's going to be expected of us in those permits by just looking at other jurisdictions. That is the trigger in which they will give it, but they also reserve the right to give it before 50,000. They have told us they expect to be giving it. And I don't know if they directly said regardless of your population, but they said McMinnville will be next on our list to be issuing this. We are the largest city in Oregon right now that does not have one. And so we are, it's inevitable whether it's in two years or five years, we know it's coming. So we don't know exactly when, yes, but we are expecting it. That permit, if we go back one... Sorry. That permit will be similar to the TMDL in a lot of ways. It's a lot of, okay, you need to have, it's a programmatic, you need to set up a program, but it's going to go a lot further in depth and be much more costly than the TMDL. You will be required to develop a storm, or we will be required to develop a stormwater management plan, which includes detention and water quality. And so we will have clear, we will have to have clear standards, measurable standards by which we enforce all development for how much to detain, depending on what they're developing, and what they have to do to clean that stormwater. We'll have to have a spill prevention and response program and we'll have to have ongoing water quality monitoring. With this, we'll also have to develop full construction standards and an enforcement program for stormwater. We do not currently have development construction standards for stormwater. And that is, it's important to do that because it sets the expectation. Developers know what they'll have to build when they come here and the city knows what we'll have to maintain when they build it. Right now, we have industry standards, but we don't have clear requirements on that and that'll be part of meeting that permit. Are there any questions on the regulatory information in the back? A stormwater system development charge for developers? I anticipate the first, you have to have a master plan developed, which would also be looking at SDCs in order to use that. And I think the first thing we need to do is that master plan so we better understand our system. And part of that discussion would be looking at our SDCs, something that we would utilize. Yeah. Yeah, we're not required to wait until we have an MS4 permit plan to discuss whether we would implement SDCs or not. That would really be a policy discussion at a council level, whether they wanted to go that route or not. I think the typical, or the current train of thought is let development pay for development so they would pay their responsible amount for whatever they're developing and not be subsidized by the city per se. I'm not anticipating that the TMDL will change because the MS4, the MS4 goes into a lot more detail. They kind of build on each other and they're interrelated, but I don't think one is going to change the other. Our intent would be to have, to build a program that meets both regulatory requirements at the same time, not separate programs. Yeah, yes in the back? It's a good question. Hence the reason we've hired a consultant to help us with this project. It depends on the scope of your project, what you're implementing, whether we could do it internally or we would have to get a consultant to help us. We don't have a lot of staff internally to do a programmatic change like this. We would likely have to have an internal staff member manage a project and that project would be primarily consulted out to a consultant to help do that heavy lifting. With so many unknowns in the future, there is no guaranteed, this is the amount of fee it is. The reality is, we don't know what we don't know. And we need to get something established so we can better learn what we have and then understand what we need to do to fix it. Any other questions? That is another good question. I don't know if I have the answer for that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Leland.
So as far as like the heavy metals and getting into the storm system, the best management practice is to try and keep them from getting there in the first place. So the erosion control plans, try and keep that erosion from getting into the stormwater. That is the major source of mercury that makes it to the river is from erosion. Basically, another country that doesn't have good controls, their pollution comes over the top of us, the rain drops it out on top of us, ends up in the soil. Then we've got to deal with it somehow. And our way of dealing is trying to keep that erosion from making it into the rivers, if that helps.
You have another question?
A question I have. You're consulting engineers that you've been dealing with for four years on this. Are you looking outside the window a little bit? Because if you're going to take our core system coming through town, try to do that. Number one, it's undersized. And number two, the more you add vertically, the more it's going to...
Absolutely.
Consulting engineers need to take a look at, okay, let's divide this into three systems because this doesn't have to go through a wastewater plant like our common waste does.
Absolutely right.
There are several water areas that we can discharge water that are going to make sense and maybe hold down costs. We've got to think a little outside the window.
You're absolutely right, yep.
I crawl down a 4-inch line under the railroad track.
Oh. I don't know if I'd crawl down it now. You are absolutely right. We need to look at this holistically. We need to have a good understanding of the whole system and how it works.
And just think, as old as this one, how's this?
This is not a new problem under the sun. Everyone's dealing with similar issues. Yep, yep.
Okay, now, when we run our wastewater plant, you can get fined if you have discharges that are in violation. We have one city, one state, that never has done within. You know who it is and we know who it is. But what's the sense in fighting if it's so big and so old? They just do the best they can, the best they can.
Yeah, and there is a fundamental difference between us and some other systems. We do not have a combined sewer system. We have a separate storm and a separate sanitary system. But you're right. An example of needing to look holistically at the whole system is with our recent urban growth boundary expansion. We are no longer planning for what was previously understood to be the city limits. Now we're planning for the whole urban growth boundary. What do we need to do to avoid having to come back and tear this street up again? We want whatever we put in the ground to last. I doubt we're going to get 100 years out of it, but if we can get that 50- to 100-year design life out of our systems, that's what we're looking for. Right now, here's another way to look at, as we're looking into making sure we're maintaining that system, is if you have a design life of 100 years, you should be replacing 1% of your system every year. That'd be 14 and a half miles per year. We're not close to it. So we have to look holistically. How much are we going to maintain? How much are we going to replace? How do we serve future generations? I'm probably, we're probably getting off topic a bit, so I think we're ready to go to the next one. So I think Chip's back up. Thank you.
So one of the basic questions that I'm sure you're asking and one of the things that city council has asked us to look at is why consider a stormwater utility? And I'll be going over some of the reasons, some of the drivers for that. The concept of a stormwater utility is not new. I think I mentioned that the first one was in Corvallis and started in 1978. I was part of that process with that utility. And since then, most communities, with very few exceptions, greater than 20,000, have adopted a stormwater utility. I thought I'd give some examples here of cities that have stormwater utilities in place. This is not an exhaustive list, it's just a sample, but Portland, Lake Oswego, Albany, Corvallis, Bend, Eugene, Springfield, and Medford are all communities that have adopted a stormwater utility. And they've adopted it for two reasons. One is to have a stable funding source for taking care of the stormwater system and the other is to have an equitably funded system so that the people that are benefiting up most by it pay a larger share than those that have a smaller impervious area. In terms of the implementation progression or the steps that we see taking in order to get to a fully funded stormwater system, the first would be a shared maintenance and funding cost. So right now, we pay for the limited work that we do in the stormwater system through a combination of street and sanitary sewer funds. The street fund is driven by gas tax. The sewer is driven by the volume and the strength of wastewater. So one of those correlate to the amount of runoff that you get from a property. And so what we're looking for is a more equitable way of allocating those costs. Some key steps in the implementation process are to project annual system revenue needs, to allocate cost to customer classes based on benefit, in this case, we're using impervious area as a gauge of benefit, to adopt and implementing ordinance, and to begin billing. Next slide. We wanted to show you where we are currently funding-wise and what we've identified as a funding need. And so currently, we have, you can see that our total is $620,000 that the city is spending to maintain our stormwater system. And this is covering 145 miles of storm sewer, 45 miles of open channels, many, many catch basins. So of that 620, $440,000 is dedicated to street sweeping. So that leaves a very small dollar amount to maintain the balance of the system. Street sweeping is critical. It helps keep the pollutants out of the stormwater, but we still have pipes to maintain. And then looking at what our projected revenue needs are for collections, we've got $515,000 stormwater operations, $695,000. Engineering support, which is regulatory compliance and technical support for things like development review, $695,000. And then administrative. Administrative would be things like billing, cost sharing within the city for general fund expenses, $560,000. So that totals to $2.5 million. And then we have a million and a half budgeted for capital improvements. And that first million and a half, we'd be targeting primarily for development of a stormwater master plan so that we have a better understanding of our system and we're able to do a better job in prioritizing what improvements need to be made. Yes, go ahead. The $700,000 would be not just for, yeah. So no, it wouldn't be just for, it would be also for expanded maintenance. So it would be things like video inspection. Yeah, yeah. Okay. This is our estimate of where we need to be to be fully funded and what we're proposing is that this be phased in over a three-year period. So for a single-family residential property, it would start at $9.50 per month and then it would increase to $12.50 the second year and $15.50 the third year. It's based on, for single-family residential properties, it's based on the average impervious area. And, yeah, for a single-family residential, it's a fixed fee. So it's based on an average impervious area for homes within the city. Oh, I'm sorry, 3,500 square feet. Right now, they would not. Right now, it's a single fee. Having what's called a tiered billing system where people with a smaller house pay less than those with a large home with a lot of impervious area, that's where we need to go to. And that's what we were hearing from our project advisory committee as well. What we don't have now is the information to be able to develop that tiered rate structure. So one of the things that we'd be looking very hard at when we use the stormwater master plan is developing those tiers. That is best practice and ideally, we'd like to start that now, but we don't have the information that we need to do that. Yes?
that was something that came across very strong with them as well and with us. It's more equitable to have a tiered system. And our goal is to get the information that we need as early as we can so that we can set up a tiered system. And that will be our recommendation to city council as well.
Let's go into talking about, on the next slide, and start going through what the project advisory committee is and what they recommended.
Sure, sure.
Where did this 35,000 per feet come from?
This came from aerial survey of, that was done in 2022 of McMinnville. And then our consultant, Reftelis, used GIS data, so they-
You're making, you're making a-
Well, we're making a, we're doing a sample, and from that sample, we're making an assumption. But I think one of the things to consider is that it's not just drainage for your property. It's also drainage for downtown and other, the hospital and other places at work. Okay. So, if, if your question is, should we have a tiered residential rate, agree 100%? If we had the information, that's what we'd be proposing today. But we don't have that. And until we get it, we need to have a, a flat rate to get funding in place so that we can determine what that rate structure would be. Our, our consultant, Reftelis, would be sampling a broader part of the community. And with that data, they can generate with, I think they said 95% confidence what those tiers would be. Right now, we don't have that data.
We're also missing a lot of the capital cost data. So, without a stormwater master plan, we're also missing the information we need to establish those rates.
Right, yeah.
We, we have a lot, I think we have a lot more information in the coming slides that will help answer some of your questions. I think we need to keep moving with the next slide.
Okay. I see you have a question. It could be, maybe that's the last question, and I'll move on.
I just want to throw a question to you that you have a chance to look at. I happen to live in a facility that you're going to do some work on and repairing both of the lines that you've shown on here, and that's a make and fill matter. Here's the thing with how you deal with that. That's two-thirds the way through your system. Now, what size piping are you going to use when you know that you can't even handle the flows that you have now, that you add to? So, I'm going to watch this and-
All right.
Because there are multiple problems that are dealing with, I understand that. That's why alternative answers might be helpful.
Yes, in an ideal world, we would have the drainage or a stormwater master plan done now. And then we could say with confidence, here's what we need, here's what our priorities are, based on a condition assessment. We don't have a stormwater, a stormwater master plan now that reflects current conditions. And we don't have the funding for that, to, to pay for that plan. And that's one of the first things that we'd be doing with the utility, is getting that plan underway. I, I want to talk a little bit about our project advisory committee. It was a 12-member committee, was made up of five residential customers, two commercial customers, three institutional customers, one industrial customer, and one member representing the development community. And then we had our counselor, Zach Geary, as a liaison between the committee and City Council. And that committee was formed in September of last year. And their focus, they really have a two-pronged focus. One is what we're talking about tonight, the stormwater utility. They'll have a follow-on focus on wastewater and looking at wastewater master plan work that's being done now. But for tonight's meeting and their, for their initial focus, it has been on the stormwater utility. We've had four meetings with the group. We met in, between October 2023 and March 2024. And as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of dry material to go through. And they did, and we really appreciate their efforts and their input. And they've been very helpful in guiding us to, to where we're at today and being a good sounding board for different ideas. Other outreach efforts that we've done are, we have an engineering website, and on that website is information about the stormwater utility. There's also an iHeartMac website that has information on stormwater utility. The newspapers have done a great job in reporting both during the time that we were recruiting for members on the project advisory committee. And then as we've had meetings with the committee, they provided articles on, following each one of those meetings. So, that's been really helpful. We've had two City Council work sessions, one back in August of 2022, and then most recently, last month, where we shared information with the council on what our proposed actions were going to be back in August of 2022, and then to summarize for them what the project advisory committee's recommendations were. And then we have our community meeting tonight. Yes?
So, you had four meetings?
Four meetings, that's correct.
You had three people that were citizens?
Five people, well, I believe all of them were citizens. Yeah. Well, we had five people that were residential customers. Okay, and then we had, go ahead. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't think we had one meeting where everyone was in attendance. But I, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many were, were present at the different meetings. We do, yes. And I can certainly pull that together. We have a sign-up sheet for those. So, I, yeah, the, the information's there, I just don't know it off the top of my head. I do know that we didn't have a meeting where all of the residential customer representatives could be there. Okay, okay, sure. So, the project advisory committee had several, a number of recommendations. We wanted to share the, the milestone ones with you today. The first one that I've got on rate recommendations is the, starting with a single tier or single charge, flat charge for the residential properties, with a strong impetus to move to a tiered rate structure as soon as we could. But that's in our mind, and as I mentioned before, it's, it's best practice, it's where we want to be. Other recommendations were for single-family residential, the properties would be built based on a median measured impervious area of 3,500 square feet. Then for all other customers, for multifamily, commercial, industrial, and institutional customers, their charges would be based on their actual measured impervious area. A, a couple of the other recommendations that the committee had dealt with risk management. And the committee recommended that expenses required to meet water quality regulatory requirements be fully funded to meet the community's values and to avoid enforcement penalties and potential third-party litigation. In terms of a minimum fund reserve, the recommendation was that we build over the, a three-year period, a reserve, emergency reserve in the fund, starting at 500,000 and working up to a million dollars.
I'll, I'll expand on that a little bit, too. That we, they felt that the emergency fund was important, given that right now, a lot of what we do is reactionary. Because of the age of our system, there's a higher risk that something can happen. And so, getting that established earlier than later, we felt was important to be able to respond quickly and to fix issues as they came up.
Well, and the last one, I'm sorry, I had to find it in my notes. The last recommendation on revenue was that rather than charging this as a single fee right up front, that it be transitioned over a three-year period. And so, that's, that's what we're proposing. I, I wanted to go to the next slide and maybe we'll talk about some example rates. The first one is for single-family residential. And you can see that they would start off in fiscal year '25, '26, that would be July of next year, at $9.50 per household. The following year, that would increase to $12.50. And the final year would be $15.50. And then we've given some examples there of what customers that would be paying based on measured impervious area would be. And you can see that that range is pretty broad. It goes from a high of 4,000, approximately $4,300 per month. That would be for a large industrial area. And for the one that we were looking at here, that would be about 22 acres of impervious area. For a, a small commercial area, we were looking at $134 per month. I have a hard time reading this, just a, $124 per month. And so, you can see that that's the range of rates that we'd have. They're based on the amount of impervious area that a property has. And that impervious area is expressed in what we call ERUs or equivalent residential units. So, each ERU is 3,500 square feet. So, to calculate the bill for a non-residential property, you would take the total impervious area and divide that impervious area by 3,500 square feet to calculate the number of equivalent residential units. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So, the idea with the first year is that we wouldn't be funding it entirely out of the stormwater utility, that we would continue to rely on gas tax and sanitary sewer revenue. And then as we incrementally move from the first year to the third year, we'd be fully funding the program with the stormwater utility. In the third year, yes. So, what we have projected are operating costs that we have some confidence in. And in looking at those, that gets us up to the $15.50 rate. And the million and a half for capital is largely funding the stormwater master plan. So, that would be coming from the user fees, the, the stormwater monthly charge. Does that answer your question, or am I not understanding?
The, we, we identified that- We, we have a lot more information on, on, on the costs that, that we could go into in detail later, maybe. Sure, that, that'd be good.
Yeah, I, I think that, I don't know. Can you hear me? No. I've got a green light, but it's not-
Yeah.
Testing, ooh, yeah, that works. So, with any utility system, and we do this with wastewater, too, I've helped the city put financial plans together, project out what the costs are going to be. And, and yeah, there are some unknowns, but there are also some knowns. We know what is going to require to comply with the TMDL regulatory requirements, staffing costs. We've got estimates from McMinnville Water and Light of what it's going to cost to bill. So, we do have estimates. And as Chip has presented initially, the, what, what is less known is which particular capital projects, excuse me, need to be done when. And that's what the master plan would help to identify. The operation and maintenance costs, the city has been doing operation and maintenance, street sweeping. It's got some ongoing activities. We know what it costs in other communities, as Chip said. There are lots of other communities that have stormwater utilities that are currently in place that are meeting these requirements. So, it's not that it's all just a shot in the dark. We do have a lot of information. You mean, what are, what are the particular infrastructure? I'll let James take that one. I'm not an engineer, I'm an economist.
So, so what we pulled together here, we've identified that the 1550 is what we need to have of, of an actual fully functional stormwater program. There, there, there's a difference between that and us scaling it down to the absolute minimum that we can get by to, to meet regulatory requirements and, and do what we do today. That's the 950. And so, we said, we can phase this in, we can start at the very minimum, but we need to get up to that point where we can be proactive and start doing those capital projects. That's what the 1550 is. As, as far as, as building other facilities, necess- later, when we get an MS4 permit, there will be requirements for treatment and detention associated with that. We do not have that requirement at this time. And we would not be taking water out of the storm system to treat and detain it. That usually happens similar to like the erosion control. It happens prior to it going into the system because that system goes straight to the river. And it would be very difficult to intercept that without causing upstream issues to users. We don't want to block that system off and cause localized flooding. And so, there'd be, that effort to treat and detain will come at a, at a later date, once we have that regulatory requirement.
So, and I'll address one other thing on the, the question that was raised about, can the rates then go down? The, because we're phasing, the proposal is to phase in and have the stormwater take on more and more costs associated with the stormwater. You have both a situation where the costs are increasing because the city has to comply with the, the regulatory requirements. And then you also have moving costs over that are currently being funded by wastewater and other things. A, a residential customer is actually going to pay less if it's, if the rate is based on impervious area than they are if they're covering the same amount of costs paid out of the wastewater bills. That's just because the way the, those rates are structured and because a residential customer contributes less impervious area on average than through the wastewater bills. So, it's a more equitable system. It's a stable funding source for stormwater services specifically, which is the definition of a user fee. And so, the idea is to incrementally address the, what we know is coming down the pike in terms of the operation and maintenance because they're planning this now, and the, the full implementation of the TMDL is a couple of years out, there's time to do that. And there's also time to start funding this master plan to plan the next 20 years and, and, and longer, build out. So, you're sizing your pipes adequately in order to, you know, make sure that the system going forward has the operation and maintenance costs it needs so that there aren't these emergency situations, and also to continue to reinvest in the system and to prevent these pipe failures. and to prevent these pipe failures. Well, I'm sure Leland would tell you that the master plan, that the wastewater system is currently undergoing, will be identifying lots of, you know, for one thing, there is inflation that the city is experiencing, the infrastructure systems, just like we all experience in our homes and our businesses. And is a very capital investment, these are capital investment utilities. So, and these plants, these large plants, like the wastewater treatment plant, they only are designed to last for, you know, the equipment and things, 20 years max. The regulatory requirements are always changing. So they're continuing to need to reinvest in those systems to stay current with regulations and rehabilitation and replacement of assets. So it's not, it's gonna go to the wastewater system.
So can I jump in a second here, sir?
Of course.
I'm David Renshaw, I'm with Public Works Operations. I manage the street system and other things. I think with the, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the question you're asking, of the funds that are being currently consumed out of the street fund for stormwater operations, what is gonna happen with those funds? Is that your question? Okay, so I'll let Leland handle the sewage one. It's around, I think the figure was $400,000, some odd thousand dollars. That's being expended out of the gas tax for stormwater operations. What would happen if the utility were to fund that, those revenues could then go back into the payment asset? The, yes, sir. What we have is, we have about $2.2 million of need in our payment system, just to keep it at its current level. We're currently only able to fund about $500,000 of that. And so what this would do is it would free that money up to be in, or enhancing what we can do with the payment asset. So it's, you know, one of the issues we have is that, and I think it's been questioned here, the concept of stormwater being an unfunded utility is not new. You know, it's in our budget message every year. This has been talked about. I've been here for almost 20 years now, and it's been an issue for 20 years. Right? And so I think that the more we can do to clarify what will happen with these funds is good, and that's what would happen in the street fund. Leland can talk about the wastewater fund.
I have to go back to the last thing, 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 the last thing. We have all these utilities, we have, I, 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 I,[930.63][930.63][S02, I, 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 I,[931.63][931.63][S02, I, 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 I,[932.63][932.63][S02, I, 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 I,[933.63][933.63][S02, I, 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 I,[934.63][934.63][S02, I, 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 I,[935.63][935.63][S02, I, 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 I,[936.63][936.63][S02, I, 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 I,[937.63][937.63][S02, I, 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 I,[938.63][938.63][S02, I, 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 I,[939.63][939.63][S02, I, 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 I,[940.63][940.63][S02, I, 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 I,[941.63][941.63][S02, I, 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 I,[942.63][942.63][S02, I, 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 I,[943.63][943.63][S02, I, 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 I,[944.63][944.63][S02, I, 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 I,[945.63][945.63][S02, I, 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 I,[946.63][946.63][S02, I, 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 I,[947.63][947.63][S02, I, 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 I,[948.63][948.63][S02, I, 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 I,[949.63][949.63][S02, I, 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 I,[950.63][950.63][S02, I, 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 I,[951.63][951.63][S02, I, 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 I,[952.63][952.63][S02, I, 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 I,[953.63][953.63][S02, I, 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 I,[954.63][954.63][S02, I, 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 I,[955.63][955.63][S02, I, 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 I,[956.63][956.63][S02, I, 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 I,[957.63][957.63][S02, I, 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 I,[958.63][958.63][S02, I, 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 I,[959.63][959.63][S02, I, 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 I,[960.63][960.63][S02, I, 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 I,[961.63][961.63][S02, I, 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 I,[962.63][962.63][S02, I, 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 I,[963.63][963.63][S02, I, 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 I,[964.63][964.63][S02, I, 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 I,[965.63][965.63][S02, I, 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 I,[966.63][966.63][S02, I, 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 I,[967.63][967.63][S02, I, 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 I,[968.63][968.63][S02, I, 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 I,[969.63][969.63][S02, I, 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 I,[970.63][970.63][S02, I, 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 I,[971.63][971.63][S02, I, 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 I,[972.63][972.63][S02, I, 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 I,[973.63][973.63][S02, I, 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 I,[974.63][974.63][S02, I, 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 I,[975.63][975.63][S02, I, 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 I,[976.63][976.63][S02, I, 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 I,[977.63][977.63][S02, I, 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 I,[978.63][978.63][S02, I, 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 I,[979.63][979.63][S02, I, 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 I,[980.63][980.63][S02, I, 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 I,[981.63][981.63][S02, I, 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 I,[982.63][982.63][S02, I, 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 I,[983.63][983.63][S02, I, 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 I,[984.63][984.63][S02, I, 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 I,[985.63][985.63][S02, I, 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 I,[986.63][986.63][S02, I, 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 I,[987.63][987.63][S02, I, 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 I,[988.63][988.63][S02, I, 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 I,[989.63][989.63][S02, I, 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 I,[990.63][990.63][S02, I, 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 I,[991.63][991.63][S02, I, 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 I,[992.63][992.63][S02, I, 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 I,[993.63][993.63][S02, I, 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 I,[994.63][994.63][S02, I, 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 I,[995.63][995.63][S02, I, 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 I,[996.63][996.63][S02, I, 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 I,[997.63][997.63][S02, I, 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 I,[998.63][998.63][S02, I, 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 I,[999.63][999.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1000.63][1000.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1001.63][1001.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1002.63][1002.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1003.63][1003.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1004.63][1004.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1005.63][1005.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1006.63][1006.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1007.63][1007.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1008.63][1008.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1009.63][1009.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1010.63][1010.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1011.63][1011.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1012.63][1012.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1013.63][1013.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1014.63][1014.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1015.63][1015.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1016.63][1016.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1017.63][1017.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1018.63][1018.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1019.63][1019.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1020.63][1020.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1021.63][1021.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1022.63][1022.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1023.63][1023.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1024.63][1024.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1025.63][1025.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1026.63][1026.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1027.63][1027.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1028.63][1028.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1029.63][1029.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1030.63][1030.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1031.63][1031.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1032.63][1032.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1033.63][1033.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1034.63][1034.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1035.63][1035.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1036.63][1036.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1037.63][1037.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1038.63][1038.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1039.63][1039.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1040.63][1040.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1041.63][1041.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1042.63][1042.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1043.63][1043.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1044.63][1044.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1045.63][1045.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1046.63][1046.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1047.63][1047.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1048.63][1048.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1049.63][1049.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1050.63][1050.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1051.63][1051.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1052.63][1052.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1053.63][1053.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1054.63][1054.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1055.63][1055.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1056.63][1056.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1057.63][1057.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1058.63][1058.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1059.63][1059.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1060.63][1060.63][S02, I, 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 I,[1061.63][1061.63][S02, I, 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 I,
We will do that, yes. And I apologize, I missed that when I was looking at that flyer for, it didn't mention the address. And I also didn't catch the wording glitch that you pointed out where it didn't make sense. So it's an embarrassing mistake, it's a big mistake, but it won't be repeated. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions. Yes?
How are they going to monitor that for each person?
In terms of how are they going to monitor the level of mercury or other pollutant? There is going to be no monitoring for the pollutants themselves. Again, DEQ has set it up so it's just best management practices to try and limit any of that getting into the system. That is correct, and that's why every city in Oregon has to have, greater than 10,000 people presently has to set up and have a mercury TMDO for their city. And the county has one as well for the county roads and infrastructure. Rural, other than any county property and roads, any of the county roads and different things, they have to set up a plan as well.
Steve Ober from 1851 Northwest Doral Street, near the golf course. We've talked a lot about equity here today, about equity for users. What proposals or what recommendations to the council are you doing as far as those who live in the city but don't use the city or the storm sewer system? We in effect have, as an amenity, we handle city water through our system as a conduit, goes into a pond on the golf course and then directly into Cozing Creek. So as a matter of equity, the city might be paying us rather than billing us. So have you made a thought of a proposal for the council to consider this?
Oregon drainage law is a very complicated series of civil lawsuits. I'll just start by saying I'm not qualified to fully discuss those, but it has been talked about what happens with private systems in the city, if they would get any break or whatnot, what could be considered. With the offering reduced rates and whatnot for different scenarios adds a lot of administrative complexity that right now at this time I don't think would be appropriate for the utility as it's starting up. That could be considered with that next phase as we're going through the master plan and we're looking at going to a tiered structure, that it could be considered on what other reductions could happen depending on the scenario. And that was something that was discussed in the PAC and would be recommended to be not ignored, but looked at later with the master plan.
I think one of the things to keep in mind is that a number of things that are going into that stormwater utility aren't to serve just your individual property or your neighborhood, but are for community-wide maintenance and operation of the storm sewers. So things like going downtown and making sure that it's not flooded, or having the hospital, the road to the hospital so it doesn't flood. There are a number of things there that are community-wide benefits rather than benefiting an individual property. And I'm not suggesting that there couldn't or shouldn't be a reduction in a rate because you have a private system, but the majority of that cost is going for community-wide benefits rather than individual improvements to a property.
You'll notice we didn't use the term that this is an equitable recommendation. We're careful to say this is more equitable than what we have today, and we would always be striving as we make changes in the future to continue going that route and continuing to pursue equity. You'll never have a perfect equitable situation, but I agree, in the future, I think it should be looked at and considered.
I'd like to add on to what Steve has said, that there are 84 residences on that private street, and we pay for all of our storm sewer system, we pay for our street system, we pay for our street sweeping system, we have a lot of costs that we have paid, and you are not giving us by what you're recommending here, and I hear spreading it out over the community, but you need to absorb our costs then, because we have a 50-year-old system, not 100-year-old system, and it is in good shape now. We have had it scoped, we have had it cleaned, we have had it repaired, we have a street sweeper come by all, you know, five times a year, we pay for our own street repairs. So we have a lot of expenses that we already pay because we are a private street. You do not reimburse us for any of that at all. And we are an exception, and I don't know how many other places are exceptions like we are. And I do think it needs to be more than just equitable. We need to be reimbursed by the city for the expenses that we are now being paid, that we are paid. And we are allowing the city to run its stormwater through our system and end up at, into the golf course and then into Cozing Creek. So we could stop that. At some point, we don't tend to do that, but you are receiving a benefit from us that you have not recognized. And even in your comments just now, I don't feel that you've given us any kind of fair and equitable recognition.
And just to add on to that point, our system is good enough for you to run 1.2 miles of the drainage, city drainage off the new and expanded Baker Creek Road. It's also good enough to run all of the stormwater drainage off the Mormon church through our system. It's also good enough to run the stormwater drainage for one-third of the 500 or 600 Lennar houses across the street. We're providing you with that service at no charge. We've been carrying the load for 40 years in that regard.
Steve Caldwell, I also live in the HOA there. And what I have in my hand, and I'll give it to our city councillor here so he can peruse through it and then share it with the rest of the committee. Oh, you're not, I'm sorry. I thought you were the councillor representative. So I guess our councillor representative is absent today. Then whoever the appropriate senior person for this group is, there we go, I'll hand these to you. You've heard a lot of what I wanted to say, so I'll paraphrase my statements, is in our community, we, and when you're talking about equitable, we have people where this fee will mean absolutely nothing. And we have those where they'll begrudgingly pay the fee. And we have those where they're already wondering about how they're going to stay in their home. And some of those people are seniors. And then we also have young families. Yeah, that's true. And, you know, I fit that bill too, being well over, you know, yeah, I do, fully retired, 65-plus. So it's an issue of even our young families are questioning this fee and saying, hey, we pay a lot of money, we shouldn't have to pay this. So our request of the city is to exempt Michael Book Fourth Edition HOA of any proposed and future storm sewer fees. And that's what these 17 notes say. And 17, that's almost 20% of the homeowners. And we have a lot of those senior folks and others whom just don't do, you know, this sort of confrontation well. So they're not going to be here, they didn't even want to do one of these, even though we asked, and they were, if you sit around and have a cup of coffee with them, they're pretty steamed. So you guys really need to take a look at this and exempt us. And the idea, well, we could do a percentage, you heard some people talking about how we ought to be reimbursed, well, maybe we should. But I think that we'd go away somewhat happy if you would just say, we're going to exempt your HOA. And obviously, if there are other HOAs or similar situations in the city, you'd need to do the same. But hopefully you'll take this and really consider it and act on it.
To follow up with that, what percentage of the city is going to be excluded from benefits because they're in private systems? Do you have an acreage figure for private systems that will be taxed but not serviced?
So do we know what the extent is of a private?
What is the extent of that?
We have a lot of holes in our database.
You need to find that out, because I bet you it's a lot larger than you think, okay? And that's an equity issue. We keep hearing equity, that's an equity issue that goes a long way. I'd just like to make one suggestion, and I'll give up the mic, never give a retired lawyer a microphone. You guys would be a lot better off if you dropped the PR, marketing kind of language. This is a tax, it's a fee. I understand you're building something, you want to build something, but it's not a utility. Be honest with your citizens and tell them, this is going to cost you money, this is a fee, or this is a tax. I think that would be helpful. The step-up rate, didn't you guys learn with the mess with the fire department? Seriously. This gentleman said, let's get after it, let's get after it. If you need the money, you need the money. I'm not here to argue that you don't need to fix the storm sewer system, I'm just saying you need to do it intelligently. And intelligently doesn't seem to me to have only 700,000 out of the first 400 million go to dirt, to turn in dirt and put in pipe in. You can do better than that, guys. I know you can do better than that. You mentioned that there would be an easy and effective appeal mechanism, and that is going to be critical, because, for example, in my house, I have a hybrid system, some of it goes to my drain, my storm drains, storm gutters, some of it goes to dry wells, some of it doesn't. We've got all kinds of different things. My driveway, in fact, is impermeable. It's a pervious driveway. I shouldn't get dinged for that. When your aerial photos come in, my patio looks like it's pervious, but it's actually not.
And that's the kind of thing that we want to, for single-family residential properties, we won't be looking at individual impervious areas for each property. We'll be using the 3,500 square feet as an average for rate setting.
One other thing that you should look at in your approach is the distance of the property from the final outfall. You're all about pipe. I'm about 100 yards from the final outfall. Notwithstanding that I pay to maintain that system, and you guys won't, but will tax me for it, I'm only 100 yards from the end of it. But someone else dumps in maybe three-quarters of a mile away, they are contributing significantly more to the overall cost of the system and ultimate maintenance of the system than someone that's close to the outfall. And you should calculate that in, in terms of your utility approach. My last point, and I think this is the most important point that I can make, is do you want a patchwork system, or do you want a holistic fix? If you want a patchwork system, ignore the private systems, okay? Just ignore those people and let them out there. Then you'll have somewhat sophisticated stormwater system, but it will be a patchwork. If you want to do it and solve the problem and get ahead of the problem, like you've explained that you want to do tonight, and it makes some sense to me, just the cost basis does it, you ought to take a look at taking over those private systems, because they're not necessarily in bad shape, they're certainly not any worse than what we saw up here.
It's much better.
Yeah. And so, you want to do it holistically, or do you want to be a patchwork? And if you're going to do it as a patchwork, let the people of the city know that you're going to do it as a patchwork, and make that clear.
I think to avoid doing it patchwork is one of the reasons it's driving us to get that stormwater master plan done as quickly as we can, so we can see, get a clear picture of the system. There's a lot of gaps in data that we currently have. So you need to get a better picture of that, identify what our needs are, and prioritize those, and look at those priorities within the available funding. And schedule those out over a three-to-five year capital improvement program that would be updated each year. Yes? To make sure I understand your question, in terms of who's going to be responsible, the city would be responsible. The stormwater fund would be what's called an enterprise fund. So it means that it legally has to be used for stormwater-related expenses. And the city council are the ones that manage the enterprise funds as well as the general fund and the overall operation of the city. So that's who would be managing it. Am I captioning your full question? I think there was something else that you had as a question that I'm not answering.
Well, the idea is that it would be, as Chip said, it's an enterprise funds, which means that it's supported by designated funding sources, and the council would make decisions about what those rates should be, weighing affordability concerns with the need to invest in the system. So those user fees are charged to customers of the system in proportion to their use of the system, which is an accepted practice within the industry, is to use impervious area as the primary factor.
My question is probably more grade school than college question, but anyway. So it sounds like a lot of the money is going to be coming from gas tax, correct? So what I'm thinking about...
It currently comes from gas tax.
No, no.
I did. So right now, the way that we pay for the work that we do do on the stormwater system is a combination of wastewater, user fees, and gas tax. And gas tax is predominant, between the two, gas tax represents about two-thirds of that funding.
Because my only, my problem is thinking is that the gas, every time I turn around, it keeps going higher and higher, which means people drive less. My truck's been in the driveway the whole week. So...
I think I can clear this up for you. So when he's talking about gas tax, it's what the state gives us back from their current gas taxes. We aren't adding a gas tax. Okay?
Is McMinnville going to be involved in the 15-minute city? Don't know what it is.
I don't know what that is. Anyone here?
Can walk, too. Yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't know what it was. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
So our first slide talked to...
Are you referring to the MacTown 20...
2032.
2032 plan?
Yeah, so the MacTown 2032 plan is an overarching policy document that makes recommendations. And some of those recommendations about maintaining city infrastructure and things like that are the overarching policies that lead to us eventually looking at a stormwater utility. So, and the 2032 plan does specifically mention developing master plans for all of our systems, and stormwater is included. Still don't think I totally understand what you mean by the 2030 mandate.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, I want to say, first of all, I'm Ron Larson. I live on the north end of the city, on Joel Street, almost right at the city limits. And I've only been here two years, a little bit under two years. Summer of 2022, my wife and I moved in. And we very much like McMinnville. And I want to say, number one, thank you for having this open house, this presentation. I'm sure there's been a lot of effort to get this far, and everybody and a lot of other people on the staff who've done that. And so I'm a newbie on the kid here. I'm just going to give you my first impressions here. I agree with the comment that said, you've been dancing around the word "fee." Get it in there, that's what it is, own up to it, okay? Because I think you put a bunch of people off from the get-go with the handout that you sent out. That's the way it is. I think you also, because I tried to go on the city's website and see, what is stormwater? You know, put the search box in, tried to figure it out. I'm sorry, I couldn't find where anything had been shown what had previously led up to this. Now then I find out that it is on the iHeartMac.gov website, which I don't know anything about. So you really need to work on your communication to be able to have somebody can go online and find the information, such as all these slides. They need to be there, okay?
That's a great comment right there. And if you guys watch on the screen, Andrew will pull up where we have it on our website, because we do try to put updates there too. So thank you for bringing that up.
So if you just go to our City of McMinnville homepage, this is the first result. If you search, this is our homepage, the splash screen. If you scroll down, it's the third item in the list here, and that's our stormwater utility page.
Thank you.
I believe we have the staff reports posted there. I believe we also have the recordings of the project advisory committee?
Yes, we do. Those reside on the engineering page, well, excuse me, the same page that the stormwater utility takes you to. It's under each meeting. And at the bottom are supporting documents, presentations from the PAC meetings, as well as the recordings.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm afraid I didn't find them. I just looked at it today. So Chip, thank you for returning my call.
Oh, of course, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm not used to these things.
Either.
I talked to five cities east and north of here. I talked to three recorders and two people, never got a response. But the gentleman in Forest Grove was quite informative, and he said that up there, virtually anything that requires a construction permit, like a remodel, an addition, a new construction residential, business is included in this. But he said everything also has a requirement to mitigate their drainage, and it is inspected to make sure it's conformed or complied to. Is that something that's in the thoughts or the works, or?
James can best respond to this in terms of what we do for new development. I'm not familiar with anything that we do in terms of individual building permits.
He said that if I was to add a room onto my house, I'd have to be compliant with their stormwater runoff requirements.
Yeah, they do have that MS4 permit that we were talking about. And with that, they have an established threshold where if you're over so many square feet of improvements, I'm not sure if they're the same as Portland, but Portland is 500 square feet. If you add 500 square feet of impervious, you have to provide treatment and detention for it. So you do have to deal with that.
Another thing, my sister retired from the city of Edmond, and she worked in wastewater, which also handles her storm runoff. And she said, whoever, when you get this all established, whoever's on the front line needs to have very thick skin.
I just want to be clear, I understand the difference between impervious and pervious, and I'm kind of assuming that grass and lawn would be pervious and...
That is correct.
Concrete would be impervious.
That is correct, yeah.
So my question really is about, we live again in the McMinnville on Doral Street, and we are surrounded by a golf course that, and I live, I happen to live by one place where when it rains, I see that water pile up on the golf course and then go down, and I can hear it go down the storm sewer system that I also live right next to. So I would say that they are impervious, but I'm wondering how you might look at them, whether they're impervious or pervious, because I certainly see them as impervious.
You're getting into my cup of tea of stormwater engineering, which I really enjoy, but there's multiple hydrologic soil groups, ranging from A, which is sand, great for infiltration, to clay, which is D, which nothing infiltrates. McMinnville is predominantly C, D soils. And so in addition to the challenges of having a large impervious system out there, we also have soils that don't infiltrate well. This results in an overall need for a stormwater system that has much larger capacity than, say, you would see in eastern Oregon, where they have a lot of great infiltration. Kaiser is an example of a city similar size to us, very small stormwater system because they have sand, and they don't have to convey it all. McMinnville has the challenge of that tough soil on top of it. So that stormwater methodology and how you identify those, it is pretty clear in that grassy areas are considered impervious. Now, the runoff coefficient, or sorry, pervious, the runoff coefficient from a bad soil area is going to be higher, even in a grassy area, than it is, say, with a sandy-type soil. And so would, say they were a new development coming in, and they had to meet our new standards later in life when we have an MS4 permit, and we have standard setup, theoretically, they come in, we don't just look at their impervious surface, we look at their whole site. How much of your site is impervious? How much is pervious? They assign the correct runoff coefficients associated with those, and they design their system to handle the rainwater that's hitting their site, whether it's grass, concrete, whatever. The impervious surface, and I think Deb could touch on this, kind of industry-wide, that's the feature that is easily measurable and considered the more equitable way of trying to distribute this fee. Obviously, if you have a huge Obviously, if you have a huge parking lot, it's going to have a bigger impact on the storm system than a small driveway. And so, that's why we're going that route. Deb, do you want to touch on that at all, from an industry-wide perspective?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Impervious area is the most common basis for how the stormwater rates are assessed. There are, you can get more complex by looking at soil types, and there are, I don't know anybody in Oregon that's charging stormwater rates on that basis. Seattle, I think, does, there are five different categories. But you have to weigh all of that in the administration of that and determining for each individual customer, that with the cost of the program. And at this point, for a community like this, you know, the most equitable and common basis is to apportion the costs based on people's impervious area. Down the road, there can be, as James, I think, said, after the master plan is done and new standards are developed, there can be rate modifiers that take into account some of these other factors. And that's a more common approach of, you know, looking at dry wells and private systems, and, but all of that requires the city's ability to be able to monitor those systems, make sure they're functioning and up to standard, to city standards. And again, it's just, it's a lot more administration as you make the rate program more complex. So the idea right now is, as the fee is phased in, to start with a simple program, go to the tiered approach, because that is going to be very important in terms of allowing the scaled fees for, within the residential customer class, to deal with the interclass equities. And then also to consider later on how additional factors, like private systems, can come into play in providing some sort of credit.
And one more thing to touch on there, it's worth noting that while the PAC recommended phasing this in, that's a decision that council will have to make, whether they follow that, or if maybe, you know, the desire is just to go straight to the amount that we think we need to have a fully funded utility and start at that 1550, that could also be a decision they make. It's our responsibility to bring the information to council, but ultimately, they're the policymakers in this matter.
So, would you be able to figure out this tier system by just your $9.50 rate and keep the $9.50 rate for two, three years and figure out this tiered system? Because these higher prices are a big impact on poor people, you know? And I don't know, you know, McMinnville is gentrifying, so this is more gentrification by taxation, you know? Although the system is needed and it's good for the environment, but the lower rate needs to be installed and kept for lower-income people and fixed-income people.
The lower income can be and will be addressed through the low-income program specifically. Separate from that is the smaller-scale impact development of, and that requires additional data analysis and cost. And right now, there's no funding mechanism for that. So we really need to, at least for the first, you know, to get the fee implemented and to start generating revenue, to pay for the master plan, to pay for those capital projects, to pay for the further evaluation.
Can you do that at 950 for two, three, four, or five years, you know?
950 does not afford any capital projects.
Slowly, instead of every other year, three bucks increase, you know? You know, MAC restaurants and service people have a hard time finding workers, because everybody's got to move out of town, you know?
Bonding requires a funding source. So a bond is a loan, basically, that you have to repay, and so, you need to have a funding source for that.
To answer your question, though, that's a council decision, how they want to phase that in. Yeah, you could start with the 950 and keep it there and cap it there for a long time. They just have to understand what happens if they stop there. And the reality is, is at the 950, you're not going to see the resultant capital project investment. You're going to see the investment in a stormwater master plan, you're going to see the utility be able to start doing the street sweeping, which will alleviate David's funding for the streets. So you might see capital projects happening for the streets, but you're not going to see stormwater capital projects if you start at that very low end and you keep it there. Because the reality is, is the funding for that utility, there's a whole lot more going into it to manage the billing and the master plan effort and some of those things related there than just capital project costs. If that makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
You know, it's all well and good that you live close, you know, you live, you have your own drainage system and this and that, but when you're hooked up to the grid, it has to be distributed between you and your neighbors. So you are paying for not only your neighbors, but you have to pay for your neighbors and your neighbors. So that's just crazy without a foundation.
We're actually handling the grid, see each water through us. So, your logic I get, but we're...
You're getting at some of the complexities.
I don't want to take any... I don't want to take any more time if we don't have questions. So, I'll be available for, after the meeting, if you'd like to have a question individually. I'm sure that others here that would also be willing, if you have individual questions. But thank you for your time and coming tonight. This is our job, this is not your job. You're taking your time to come out to hear about stormwater, which is not a lot interesting, especially this time of year. Anyway, thank you.